Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Dover Select Word Meeting on Tuesday to order on Tuesday, April sixteenth at six thirty-one P M. First order of business is public comments. Yes, Sarah.
Um, we've been reviewing the Dover Town Plan. Repeatedly, and one of the things that came up, I was discussing it with the town attorney. And he was just, he was talking about utility or utility. Scale renewable energy like solar and wind facilities. That the state has a lot of latitude in forcing towns to allow construction of them. So he suggested some language changes to how we phrase that section. It doesn't change the intent. Of what we put in the town plan, but it changes the way we say, instead of saying that it's not appropriate, we're changing it to be shall be prohibited. He said you have to use that word. And this is regarding putting renewable energy facilities in the Conservation District. And the sensitive wildlife over the district. And then for the rest of the town, that it, that it's acceptable. Or that it's prohibited unless such facilities do no harm to and protect to the maximum extent feasible, natural scenic and historic features of the town. So that's the language change.
So, um, did you send that also to Patrick?
Yes.
And Matt?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and they also, he also suggested that we, um, that we add a goal or. Either a goal or an objective, there's. But not sure how to phrase it, but to investigate obtaining a determination of energy planning compliance, which is something we get from the P C. Um, and it takes about a year to get, but it also strengthens. The language in the town plan. And make sure that it's in conformance with the region. So those are the recommendations. And Matthew's gonna make these changes. So that when we, when we do the public hearing on May seventh, we'll have this language. The Planning Commission will have had an opportunity to see it. And, um, and he also fixed, there were some minor sort of grammatical things that were changed as well.
So that's one of our, our new business. Items. Let's see if there's any other public comments before we move in. Anybody have any other public comments? Jeanette?
Well, we just wanted to talk about the thirty, thirty-six hour pump test.
Yes.
Was completed over this past weekend. And they have brought the water quality samples to end time. It usually takes about four to six weeks to complete that. On them. But he said that the results, um, they pumped the water thirty-six hours at a rate of two point five gallons per minute.
And didn't run out of water?
And they didn't run out of water. He also told me there was no drawdown. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's a good thing.
They have to go explain that. So, um, so hopefully the water quality results will be favorable in the town.
Great. I want to hear folks. I want to hear.
It's just funny how you said, uh.
No drawdown.
Drawdown, that means like if there was enough water and slow.
Right. Good recharge.
But. Knowing that, why did they have to do thirty-six hours?
Because they couldn't get.
No, I was saying that after twelve hours, if it's not going down and you pump it a little harder, it still doesn't go down.
Well, then they need to get their tests to, that the water needs to be tested as it goes on.
State says thirty-six, that's.
Yeah.
Good. Um, any other public comments? Okay, so let's, um, go to under new business item B first, since we were talking about the town plan. Confirm May seventh, public hearing on the town plan at six P M here. Uh, right before our regular meeting. Everybody good with that? Everybody read the town plan?
No.
Hundred and twenty pages, baby.
I read it the whole time. I breezed through it.
Yes. Okay, well, um, I think that everybody should make sure they're. Up on it and what is, you know, and the changes, some of the changes are spelled out in this Dover Planning Commission report on town plan update that somebody updated, sent someone three pages. All right, so we're on for the seventh.
Okay, so that would be advertised.
All right, next we're going to discuss Act seventy-six Vermont Childcare Contribution Payroll Tax. Marco?
Hi.
Hi.
So there's a new, um, state payroll tax, the childcare contribution. And that's effective July first, twenty twenty-four. It's point four four percent. The, there's a, there's an employer election to withhold from employees. So of the point four four percent. Employers. May do so if they choose. Decide to shift some of that burden onto employees up to point one one, up to point one.
So quarter of it.
Quarter, so. Rough numbers, our payroll, gross payroll last year at June thirty was one point five million. The total point four four percent is sixty-six hundred to the town. If you break that up, seventy-five, twenty-five, it's forty-nine, fifty. Employer sixteen, fifty employee, twelve, everybody, all employees.
This is paid quarterly or?
So every, every pay, every pay period is just like, um. With the state withholding tax, we just put, remit it just like we do.
Okay.
Semi-weekly we do it and report it accordingly.
Joe.
So you're saying that the state has enacted a new. Employee tax.
Last year.
To employers, but the employer can decide. To do the one point one percent.
Up to, up to a quarter of it. The employer can take care of the whole thing or decide. Up to a quarter of that point four four or point one one. So that's why I'm bringing it up. It's something I like to think about. For by July one.
And just.
So right now we have to absorb.
Point three three.
Point three three on payroll. So. What was the number that's going to cost the town again?
So if you only, if you pay three quarters of it and the employees pay one quarter of it. It'll be four thousand nine fifty for the entire year.
All right.
For the town and one thousand six fifty for employees for the year.
So we just need to vote on it. We need to vote on it, take it?
Yeah.
Would you want it to be, I mean, I'm ready to vote on it and get it done with. Do you want to bring it, put another?
My biggest concern is not the point four four. But what is it the year after? And what is it the year after? And what is it the year after? And obviously we didn't budget for this.
We didn't. I mean, I only, this just came across my radar in February. The state sent the.
Because this is the kind of tax that is just going to increase. And if we, if we, if the town pays for it all. And it gets to be two or three percent, it starts becoming a much bigger number because we still have to absorb seventy-five percent. What do you guys? I, I'm, I'm torn on it.
I'm, I'm, nothing against, I'm not torn at all. I believe. If there's a way that we can ship some way to the employees, maybe the employee will be a little more mad and. Get a little more involved and then, you know, the thousand dollars, nothing. So it's nothing on their payroll. Overall, it's like about fifty, sixty bucks. So I don't think me as a taxpayer, my other contingencies taxpayer should, I think everyone should feel it.
I'm just bringing you the information.
I would just like, here's the biggest thing, I know, but here's the thing, and I'm not saying this in a mean way, I, I wonder what everyone else is gonna do. You know, what are the other employers gonna do? Are they gonna take?
I've not heard from other towns yet.
I, but this is for all employers, so like.
All employers.
This isn't just municipal. And it's for all self, all self-employed people.
Self-employed people.
So it's a new tax.
So.
Childcare now. I, I just, it, it just blows my mind that the state decides for each employer, like a tax like that should just be set and dry what it's.
Joe, you should have had last year.
Huh?
This, this was last year's law. It's just us finally taking it.
Oh, that's my own thing. I mean.
I, I know.
So.
So my concern is that it gets bigger and bigger than the town. If we, you know, right now it's a pretty meaningless amount of money, but it, you know how these things go. So that's, that's.
And there's one more thing you're gonna have to put on through accounting too.
So Nimrick is preparing towards this. We can handle it either way. Fine. I just, I'd be curious to see, I, I want to pull other towns to see how they're doing it, but oh, it's not really, it's. Slippery. I couldn't let you know.
Maybe, maybe we should table it for this one, get it back on the next meeting. Maybe you can get some. Probably we're on the front end of some of this as well, so.
Right.
Um, but yeah.
Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
And then everybody maul it out, you know, it's, it's not gonna.
Put it on the.
Next agenda.
I think we could put it on a mold out for months, just put on the agenda that we're gonna vote on. Whether or not we're gonna pay whatever, put the numbers on there and see what comes out to.
Well, the numbers are approximate. I mean, it all depends on what our payroll, you know, how much overtime we have, all that kind of thing. So it's really the percentages.
It took the, the payroll number out of the town report because that's a gross.
It's a good estimate of what, what we think we're gonna do. So, but if you can find out what anybody else is doing, I don't think that point one one percent childcare tax credit would. Impede our ability to hire and retain employees.
You know.
So. Okay, I think it would be more likely.
Can to get some information, what others are doing. I don't know about the private sector, you know.
Yeah, that, I think it, it's more for us, it's probably municipal or, you know. Okay, thanks, Marco.
Sure. I don't know. I think it's self-employed.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I wonder, well, if we, if we set a precedent, pay one hundred percent and then it goes up with you.
That's been my point. That was my point. So that if, as it goes up, we all go up with it.
Right.
Okay, thanks, Marco.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Okay. Lastly, we have the request from the Dover School to use the town hall chairs for their play on May ninth and tenth. Um, generally, we do not let. Items from the town hall leave the town hall. And, I mean, I, I don't know if they have a lot of broken chairs, but we seem to have a lot of chairs when we were, we, Joe and.
When my kids were there.
Well, who's gonna load them? How that, are they gonna get back? Um, once we start doing this, how do we say no? In my mind, I think we need to really think about this.
I think if we're, I think we can, we can say that. Use of town equipment by town groups. So it wouldn't, you know, if somebody wants to have a wedding at their house, they're not gonna be able to borrow, but we're loaning it to the school. Which is a, a part of the municipality, even though, I mean, it's not.
And, and are we gonna love that? We're gonna use our time to love that?
I would think that.
How about it should be damaged? How about if the chairs don't all come back? Who's gonna count them when they leave? You know?
Also, we get to be on the proud status of sailors, overcome.
Well, that's basically now, that's how it is. Like you can't leave, right? I mean, you can take them outside and have a, something on the pavement, but if we start allowing. I, I, there's like, there's a ton of chairs up there, those blue chairs. And we did the luncheons every year with all the people, you know?
I, I, I thought we had plays there and we had playing room and some people had to stand in the back just because we'd have more room to put up tables, chairs, so I don't know.
Have they had, have they had a problem with a lot of chairs suddenly gotten damaged or?
I don't know.
I don't know, but maybe Scott knows more. Scott?
Hey, sorry. So I did, I did speak with them. It's just that they're putting on, um. A play which all the kids in the school are participating in, and so they are thinking that they're gonna have. More than the chairs that they have. Um, much more. And they haven't done this before. It's a new group. They understand that it could open up, uh, you know, a can of worms if it went to other people, but. You know, I think it being the school, just trying to do this one-time thing, they said they could put down some type of deposit. They also said that if it needs to be back Friday night. Then, um, it could be back Friday night or Saturday morning. If you needed someone to like. Be there and we needed someone to open it up or something like that or count, I could. If it's okay, I would, I would help out with doing something like that. I think we should go forward and, um. Allow them, you know, and like Sarah was saying, not just open it up to anyone. If the schools really need to use them. Uh, then.
Right now it's not open to anybody.
Yeah, see, I understand that.
So is the town hall in use that weekend, Jeanette?
No.
Because if it was, that would be a.
Yeah. But. Deserve it.
So if we give it to them and somebody wants to reserve it for the weekend and the ninth and the tenth and use it Friday night, is that when the? Play is, it's the night the, is that's a Thursday? It's, yes, go, Scott.
It's Thursday and Friday night they'd need it. And I think they said, so I spoke with them today and I said, you know, if we have enough. Um, hands on deck that. If it needed to be back Friday night, then, then they could do that. Um, and like I said, you know, a, a down deposit and, and, um. Yeah, I. They seem to think.
What time is the play?
Sorry.
What, do you know what time the play starts?
No, I could make a guess, but I don't know. They said it's gonna be like an hour. And fif- fifteen minutes, hour and a half maybe at the most, but.
So if somebody had, came in and wanted to have, say, use the chairs and have an event on Friday night, the tenth. They could get them back on Friday afternoon?
Nope, there, I'm pretty sure the, the play is like Friday night.
So somebody really can't use the, the town hall, who needed chairs on that Friday night if they wanted it?
I mean, I think what you could, we could say if, yes, if this, this is the scenario, I don't know if we wanted to create like the what-if things, like if this is, but if that is the scenario, then I guess. Maybe we could say they have to bring back, they have to have half the chairs, they can only keep, use half the chairs that Friday night, and that's what it is. Just a thought. I mean, I, you know, I'd like to, I get it, we don't want to open up can of worms, you don't want to have to like, it's a kind of a pain in the butt, it wouldn't be. Great for Andy if he had to do that all the time and making sure they came back and they didn't get mixed up, but, um, I feel like this. The group would really appreciate it and you'd help me out the school and, um, if there's something I could do to help facilitate that, I would. I'd do that as well.
Jeanette?
Yeah, I was just curious, are they, are they gonna use all the chairs that are at the town hall? That's a lot of chairs.
Have a lot of chairs.
Do you know how many chairs they're thinking of taking?
I don't, how many chairs are at the town hall?
Or.
I don't know, maybe like. I don't know, fifty or, I don't.
Yeah. I'd say at least a hundred.
I put a hundred.
But Jeanette, I mean, Sarah.
They used to have, and I'm sure they still do, school concerts and every kid in the school was part of a concert and all the families showed up and they always had enough chairs for that. I mean, there was standing room for maybe ten or fifteen people. It wasn't like it was half standing and half sitting.
And they brought chairs from every classroom if they needed to. I mean, it wasn't a big deal and, and they packed that. Gym, is it gonna be, is it gonna be in the gym? For like concerts and everything. There's a lot of chairs around the school as well.
That's a good point.
Well, I remember, you know, just all the chairs out of the, uh, the. Music room and out of classrooms and the library and it, it just wasn't a problem.
Sure, yeah, I, I, once again, like I'm.
And how many students are in the school?
Probably less than when your kids were there. I don't know, eighty-nine, ninety?
Eighty-nine, yeah.
Ninety kids.
Well, you, I, I'm, I'm kinda on the fence with this, so does somebody want to make a motion and, uh. To allow the one-time use of the chairs at the school?
Sure, I moved that we, um.
And then they take care of them and that they have to, they are the, they're physically, you know, bring them, take them and bring them back. And they need to be all accounted for.
Sure, and I, and before I make that, that motion too, I, I'll bring up that, you know, the, the idea of, um. Taking them from. Classrooms or whatever, because that just might be easy. I don't know, maybe they didn't think of that or. I, I didn't, I don't know, but I could bring that up too, but like I said.
Yeah, I, I, I really, I just remember it was all, the chairs from all over the school came in and packed the room, as many as you could probably put up in the gym.
Change, furniture, the furniture of the school or something?
Yeah, yes, Sarah.
Am I correct that the fire department has a bunch of chairs?
Not east, but the rest.
Eastover does, and they do, for a small donation, loan them out, I believe.
But, you know.
Yes.
Means for years, you know, when we did our pig roast, we went to the town hall and left chairs and signed them out. Again, you know, these chairs all came from the town hall, people from the bottom, you know, I mean, there's a lot of switching up and forth from the school, which is quite stuff. You know, and if you want, I'll be, I'll volunteer to count and make sure they all go out and come back for you. I'll be your chair, please officer.
Charity. Alright, well, somebody needs to.
I know, okay, so. Yes, I make a motion that we approve the loan of town hall chairs to the Dover School. Subject to the requirement that. The school provide all. Um, manpower for removing, setting up and returning the chairs to the town hall at the convenience of. Mister Smith. Cause he's gonna have to open the town hall for them to get them, right?
Second.
Yes, and, and. And, and that they, that any chairs, that they, that they be counted on the way in and way out and any missing will be replaced by the school.
And that they come back at a time of need.
And, right.
Three second.
So now you're getting Dave involved opening.
Someone's gonna have to open the town hall.
Oh.
Okay, riches are, okay.
Or, or Scott, Scott said he helped you come get the key from the town hall.
Alright, so I'm gonna redo my motion.
Yeah.
Undo my motion. On motion.
Okay, so you need to retract your second.
She's.
I, uh.
Well, no, no, not stop.
You've got to retract your second. Okay, so we're starting over. I make a motion that we authorize or that we approve the loan of chairs from the town hall to the Dover School for May eighth and, May ninth and tenth. Subject to the following conditions. The school coordinates with a person, uh, volunteer who will open the town hall to, to get the chairs. That the school be responsible for all the manpower required for. Collecting the chairs, setting up the chairs and returning the chairs in a timely manner. And that the chairs be counted on the way in and way out. And any missing or damaged chairs will be replaced at the school's expense.
Second. Did I get everything? I, I hope so. It was a long. Any other discussion about it?
No discussion, but I, like Vicki said, Scott, I asked Lori O'Hern, we, we never, for any concerts or, so, so you know. Maybe that's some change in the furniture thing. Just to save you guys a lot of work.
Uh, yeah, trust me, I, I'm, I'm not requi, I'm just, you know, messenger or whatever and.
I know, I know.
People that are giving time, I, you know?
Okay. All right, hearing Noah, Noah, nothing more? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you raise your hand, Scott?
Yeah, I, sorry. I don't, I'm.
Alright, we're good with that. Uh, emergency management, adopt local emergency management plan. Okay, is it two-sided yours? Okay.
Oh.
Whoa. Okay, so we have the. Town of Dover Emergency Management Plan dated four sixteen twenty twenty-four. It is signed. Mark the block if a re-adopted plan has no changes since the previous year.
Well, you, you gotta need time to, as you're strategic.
So we just don't mark that block?
Yeah, I got it.
The, you know, Rainy's not here, so I put my name in.
So it's got new contacts.
Yeah.
But the plan itself is.
Pretty much the same, but all the plan, you can contact people.
And we have.
I added a, um, for some reason, you want us to add a whole bunch of people to help with vulnerable populations. So if we look. At the vulnerable population section, we go to set an additional contacts or hospice and SAG and Grace Cottage has a. Hospital, somebody told. Don't know if it is actual. And hopefully they'll accept it. Sometimes it did well.
Well, the visiting nurse hospice doesn't handle this, come to, to Wyndham County anymore.
Well, according to the thing that Wyndham Regional sent out, they do, so.
Or they don't come to here.
They don't come to other.
Yeah, maybe Dover was checked off. On the list.
Wow.
There's one, one thing that wasn't checked off of Dover. We had almost the most check marks of anybody.
Okay.
I'm making my statement about.
Is, hold on, is there anything else besides like?
Contacts.
No, just names.
Okay.
Name, you know. Get rid of the old and put the new in. I'm having my view still.
So I make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign the emergency management, the, the new local emergency management plan dated four sixteen twenty-four.
Second. Anything else? Any comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Did you say aye, Scott?
Aye, yes.
Sorry, I wasn't looking.
No, 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 sorry, yeah, I was just.
Alright.
She did.
She did. Okay. That's it? Moving on to economic development. Eric is here with his third quarter report. How are you feeling, Eric?
Excuse me if I mute to cough. I've been on the struggle bus for a couple days here, um. But I'm, I'm on the mend, I hope, so. Yeah, we'll just go through. Uh, what we have here. So Bytown Marketing, we ran an R F P to, to select. The organization that would be creating and running our ads for us. We've been using trampoline for the last few years. Uh, we decided ultimately to go with trampoline again. We just thought that it was important that we kept the bids competitive and, and made sure that we were. You know, working with the best organization for us and ultimately that, that turned out to be trampoline. So we're gonna be working with them for the next three years. Uh, but we did go through that. Right now, we're just, uh, working on the taglines and, and testing markets and things like that, uh, here in late April. Uh, the town website, I touched on it last week, Civic Plus bought municode. Uh, been working with them to make sure that everything got switched over. The, the new site is live. Um, so if you happen to be on the town site and stumble across a page that doesn't look. The way it used to or the way it should, just let me know or Jeanette know and we can reach out to them and get that fixed. They, it was a pretty quick, uh. Transfer there. And then as I touched on last week, I've been working on, um, redesigning and rebuilding the economic development site. We are getting good traffic on that website and we thought that it was time for an update, so, um, you know, just much sharper. Cleaner, um, easier to find things, so that'll be launching here very shortly. Uh, as far as trails, we talked over and reviewed the Trails and Recreation Committee charge with you guys, updated that. Uh, approved the funding for the pickleball port, court porta potties and the plowing at Horace Hill. And then we've been working through those months, uh, with our designer builders to, to finalize, you know, plans to get things. Done, uh, here as soon as it dries up, just a, a touch more, uh, signage, um, you know, final, final touches and completion of, uh, of. The portions of those trails. So that's been in the works and will be done, you know, A S A P, once the, once the ground, the ground dries up a little bit. We approved funding for the five K concert, or for the five K and concert for Farm Road Estate. Uh, Bytown Housing, we've been discussing the creation of the landlord support group to help people who are looking to learn about using their property as long-term rental. Um, and like the Economic Development Website, uh, redesigned and rebuilt the housing website, and that will also be going live. Shortly after some positive feedback from that group, so, uh, Deerfield Valley Housing dot com, keep an eye on that link and, and you'll see the new site very shortly. Uh, and then, you know, one of the big things we were working on through that time was just. Talking with those S T R registration companies, checking with references, you know, for all of them and, and just. Really making sure that the recommendation we made to you guys was the one, the right one that we, we felt would fit our needs. Um, so, you know, the culmination of that, obviously, at the, at the first meeting. We had in April there, um, yeah, other than that, financials on the back. Any questions for me on Q three? We had in April there, um, yeah, other than that, financials on the back, any questions for me on Q three?
So I think Linda Kirsten dropped off a letter, it's on your desk. I have a copy of it as well.
Yep.
So. Um, concerning our, our short-term rentals. Um, anything for Eric? Nothing. You are, go back and cough.
Uh, just as a heads up, I know I've been sick a couple of days, I do have a scheduled vacation the beginning of next week. Uh, for the first three days, so if anyone's looking for me, I will not be there.
Well, hopefully you're feeling better for that, so feel better and thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to go into the Board of Liquor Control. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have first and third class licenses for T T R LLC, which is to Tannery. First and third class license for handlebar hospitality, D B A value saloon. First and, second and third class license for Deerfield Beverage Concepts, D B A. Deerfield Bar and Bottle and a request to cater permit for, for the permitage in LLC.
Mike? Okay, uh, I make a motion that we approve, what, 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 sorry. If you could just make some contingent, we are missing a few things from folks, like seminars and money. Uh, fire inspection, so that, so. So I make a motion that we approve the following licenses. Uh, subject to completion of, or receipt of all of the application materials at the town office. First and third class license, T T R LLC, D B A to Tannery. First and third class license, Handlebar Hospitality LLC, D B A Value Saloon. First, second and third class license, Deerfield Beverage Concepts LLC, D B A Deerfield Bar and Bottle. And the request to cater permit for permitted gin LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to move out of, of the Board of Liquor Control.
I make a motion that we move out of Board of Liquor Control.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have the consent agenda, which is approved the minutes of April second. And everybody was here.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of April second, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any corrections, changes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion to approve the warrants of April thirteenth for one hundred ninety thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars eighty-four cents.
Second. Any discussion on the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
You are abstaining, Scott? Okay. Alright, so we're down to FYI's. School district election, Monday, the twenty-ninth, from ten A M to seven P M at the Dover Town Hall. The school district meeting is Tuesday, the thirtieth, at seven P M at the Dover Town Hall. And the greenup day is Saturday, May fourth. And the Dan meeting that struck, why?
Yes, they decided to postpone it to possibly June or July.
Oh darn, I was looking forward to that. Uh, liaison reports. I hear nothing. Executive session, I'm, I'm not aware that we need one. So I'm, hearing that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven oh five. See y'all at six o'clock, two weeks from tonight.